A lot of people here for two items. All set? Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the zoning board, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June meeting already. That year's halfway over. The June meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustment. With that, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brody?
Present.
Jane LaRoche?
Here.
Roland Mayhew?
Yeah.
Mike Novakia?
Here.
Mike Foot?
Here.
Steven Bogart?
Here. Okay, so with that, we have a quorum. Jane has so nicely volunteered to be our voting member to make up our fifth person tonight, as Marcy's not with us tonight. And with that, we'll go right into the acceptance of the minutes. Everybody get an opportunity to review the minutes. If so, does anybody have any changes, additions, subtractions, corrections? There being none, like to entertain a motion to accept as written?
Motion to accept as written. The draft minutes from ZBA, May 17th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Eight.
All right. Done. Now, before we move into doing everything, I would first like to request to silence your phones or whatever, so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the minute. And number two, as we proceed, we do have a format we follow. And there'll be a point in time where the public is requested to provide their input. And at that point only are they to provide their input. Okay? We address questions to the board, not to each other. And we don't quiz the audience, okay? That is the board's job to do. All right? And with that, we're going to go ahead. We have extensions. We have no extensions tonight, so a continued public hearings. And the first one is 377 Union Ave. Variance requesting from density to allow one unit to change from commercial to residential for a total of 11 residential units. If the applicant is here, please come forward. Introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Elias Jurgis. I'm with EJG Property Management and Construction, LLC. This property was recently purchased at 377 Union Street. Has a total of 11 units. 10 are residential and one is commercial. We would like to turn that commercial unit back to residential. We feel there'll be no impact since commercial will carry more traffic to the property, more parking, more vehicles. So we would just rather bring it back to residential. From what we understand, it was residential at one point and somehow it became commercial along the lines through the years. We feel it would, again, it would be low impact. There is a housing crisis. We're just creating affordable housing. And that's what I'm here for tonight.
All right. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Just to clarify, that's the place where the dog grooming?
Yes, sir.
And wasn't there at one time a locksmith on the other side?
I do not know. If it was, it wasn't on my watch.
Probably a long time ago.
Yeah. You could tell at one point they probably were. They're identical.
Yeah, it's dog grooming on one side and a locksmith on the other.
I'm buying the property today. And where is the parking for the proposed 12, 13 units?
So at the moment, there's limited parking. I believe there might be some on the side of the building and maybe one or two in the back.
Okay. I want to ask, what is the requirement for the parking per unit? 1.5?
Normally, it would be 1.5, yes.
Is this available or is this also need a variance for parking?
The building in effect has none now. That's a good question. There's no parking at all. Right.
No, it's all off-street.
I took some pictures of the back end of it. And there's a parking... I'm sorry, I'm interrupting the board discussion. My question for him is finished.
Yep.
Continue, please.
It's a difficult topic where there is none now. There is no space to do any. I guess that... I don't know how we could enforce a requirement for them to create one and a half spaces for this one unit where the other 10 units don't at this point in time, but...
Whether or not we had, if I may...
Yep.
Whether it was just the 10 units, there's still the same amount of parking as there would be for 11. It wouldn't change one bit.
Right. Right.
So even with a commercial mix...
Yep.
There would still be no additional parking, whether it stayed commercial or turned into an apartment.
Yep.
These are all apartments?
The majority. There's 10 residential and just that one commercial.
Apartments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. These are just normal monthly rentals?
Yep.
All right. I guess that's a better way of putting it, monthly rentals.
Yes.
Okay.
Could we consider that grandfathered?
You have a question or is it opinion?
I have more of a question for the board than... And I understand where he is.
Okay. Because opinions and discussion like that, we hold to the end for the board. Yes, Roland?
Could we consider that grandfathered? Since we're not creating a new spot in that building, it was utilized.
Right. I think that's one way to look at it. Certainly, it's in an area of the community where it lends itself to a tenant that is going to walk. It's close enough to downtown. It's close enough to services that car is not required. But yeah, no, I think grandfathering is one way to look at it. Certainly, for the existing units, that's a true statement. You know, if we, you know, if we were going the other direction, I think you'd have the same question about parking because commercial needs some form of parking. And I can't remember. I don't believe there's parking on Union Avenue at that spot. I think there is on the side street, but not on Union Avenue. I think that side of Union Avenue is no parking. So...
There's some parking over there.
The existing commercial is not... Doesn't have any parking either, you know? So you're basically maintaining status quo.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being... Have a seat just briefly.
Sure. Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Yep.
With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I don't think we have any letters or anything for this. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board. And you may come back up to the microphone. Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board to the applicant?
Elias, are there 10 rentals there now?
There is.
People are living there?
Yes, sir.
And nobody has a car?
Some people have cars. I don't know where they park them. But I know if we put another commercial business in there, there's going to be more vehicles than if there was if we just put one more tenant in there. I can also let you know that, you know, we have many other properties in Laconia. And we've been dealing with a lot of people who are on low income. And they do not come with a vehicle. So chances are in that area, we're probably going to have someone that does not have a vehicle. I know we're probably going to market it as no parking anyways because we know it's tight over there. So we don't want to cause any parking wars or anything like that. So more than likely, we're just going to advertise it, no parking.
Okay. Any other questions?
You've already done some work up there because I see the fire escapes are new and...
I'm not too sure if that was us that did that. That might have been the prior owner. And if there was something done, I have no idea about it. But we've recently... We acquired this property, I think, three months ago. So right around there.
Any other questions? Any closing comments?
No, I think that's it.
With that, I'm going to close it to the public. You may now sit.
Thank you, everybody.
Bring it to the board for discussion. And the...
Yeah, my concern was this parking. I went and looked today and there is parking on the street on that side. And it's two buildings from the high school. But there is maybe three spots on the front side and then up kind of on some asphalt on the side. So that was really my only concern. Maybe at some point, the town is going to have to wrestle with, you know, this whole grandfather parking and maybe a lower income type of thing. For me, I'm happy with him to say they're marketing it as no parking. And, you know, I would be satisfied with that.
You know, I find it interesting that my daughter, when she graduated, got a job in Boston. And she lived in the city of Boston and... Or Boston proper, whichever way you want to call it. And she lived in East Boston, okay? And the interesting part about it was there were no parking. No parking lots, no parking whatsoever. You found your own parking space on the street and first come, first served. And if not, you went to the next street and crossed your fingers that you were going to get close enough to your place or not. And what I found amazing was the year that she lived there, no one thought about it. No one complained about it, that I heard. And life moved on in the... And that's in the East Boston. I don't know if you've ever... Have you ever been on that side? But it's, you know, it's tight over there. There's a lot of residential on the top and business on the bottom. And there's a lot, a lot of beautiful foot traffic that moves back and forth where people seem to go to their little grocery stores and they go to their restaurants. And they actually have a vibrant neighborhood because people walk everywhere. They walk to the train station. They walk to the water's edge. And they walk to the... To their version of the Wild Trail, if we ever were able to complete ours. So I, you know, to me, in the evening time, it was quite exciting to be able to walk around and stuff and not realize that... And to realize that you didn't really need your car anyway, you know? So that was my thought about it and looking at some of these, some of this.
The city of Portsmouth has a lot of off-street parking. I mean, a lot of apartments there don't have any parking spaces at all for their tenants. And they find a spot and they go home.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the way it is when...
But for any new building, the town requires X amount, whether it be commercial, industrial, residential, multifamily, places of assembly, there is a formula for parking. So...
Yes.
We're kind of stuck in a no man's land here.
This is kind of like a pickle. They're stuck between first and second base. I'm eating with this one, so... Any other thoughts?
On the face of this, I don't see a problem with converting this into residential. Certainly, it is close enough downtown to allow easy access by bicycle and pedestrian means or motorized scooter. I don't know. But it seems reasonable to me.
10 beep, 10 apartment users have seemed to find a way to make it work. Along with a commercial business. So somehow they find a way to make it work. So, you know...
Changing from commercial to residential would be a help instead of a hindrance. So the building is unique. They're getting away with it. God bless them. I don't have an issue changing back into a commercial.
The building department will be involved in any modifications. So the safety issues will be handled, so...
Yep. That have what have a building permit. So I'd like to entertain a motion from...
Like to make a motion to accept application number 02022-002-VAR variance here. And we're looking for a variance to convert a commercial piece into residential, gaining one more apartment in town. Not be contrary to the public interest because there is need for affordable housing. And this is in the proper spot for it. Spirit of the ordinance is observed. Once again, is in the community, in the neighborhood where this is, it certainly lends itself to access to services, drugstores, schooling, ice cream shop. And substantial justice. You are reducing the amount of traffic when you pull a commercial piece out of a building like that. We would not be diminishing the values of the surrounding properties. And I do not see a... You know, instead of a hardship here, we're saying no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the ordinance and this application. This is reasonable because once again, we're providing housing in an area of our community where everything is most accessible. And I support it.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Jane? You in favor?
Yes, I was reading.
Okay. That's a five zero. Motion pass.
No reading ahead.
Sorry.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I hadn't seen these pictures, that's why.
Next application is 2022-0032SC. It's a special exception. 224 Endicott Street East. The applicant is requesting a special exception for Article 5, Section 235-26. Uses permitted by special exception to allow for a multifamily in the shorefront R-zone. The applicant, please come forward. Introduce yourself for the record. Tell us how we may help.
Sure, thank you. My name is Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering. I'm the agent. And Roland Mannville is the property owner and developer. I'm going to just walk you through. I'm going to see if I can borrow your easel over here, if that's okay.
Please, you take your life in your own hands with it, but go right ahead.
It's, yeah, it's...
It's questionable? Yeah, it's...
Well, it may or may not function to your...
Then I'll use my backup easel right here.
It's missing a chain, I think.
It's missing the board that goes across.
Yeah.
I saw this one here and it looked fabulous, so we'll just set it up like this. So Roland and I were before you folks, although I think we were all wearing masks at the time. It was over a year ago. When we were on Zoom, why don't you hold it? Fire is out.
Have abandoned this...
So I think it was early last winter, we were here for a special exception for this property. It's just over two acres. It's on Endicott Street East. I'm not sure if you remember that. It's a special exception. He was proposing at the time, these two duplex buildings, so four total units, which isn't allowed use by special exception. In the past, this property, it had a previous plan approved for, was it 12 houses on it? So the density does allow 12 units. It is six units per acre. We have two acres. He has a... It's a little bit of a difficult parcel. It's a sloping parcel, sloping down towards the east over here. It did have a couple of small wetland pockets in the middle of the site, which last year when we were here, the city had a... The ordinance had a 50-foot buffer setback around those wetlands. So we were dealing with that as well. And you can see on this plan, we actually had some... We had a conditional use permit from the planning board to impact the buffer in order to get these two units, these two buildings in. Zoning board granted us a special exception last year. Planning board granted us the site plan approval and the conditional use permit. So Roland's been out there working diligently. Last year and this year, he has units one and two built, ready to go. Units three and four are under construction, ready to go, close, right? Since that time, the city has revised the ordinance. So we no longer have a 50-foot buffer around these small wetlands because they're smaller than the size that has the buffer. And this small little pocket over here had previously, as part of the old development that never got built, had a permit to fill that wetland. That permit had expired before anything ever started out there. So Roland came back to us and said, hey, now that the buffer's gone over here, maybe we can get a permit to fill that wetland again, which the state granted before, so that we can add another building, which is what he'd wanted to do all along. So that's what we're here before you folks for again. We have a concurrent application into the planning board for this. We have an application into DES to fill that small wetland. We have been to the Conservation Commission for that. They signed off on the wetland application. We're scheduled to go to the planning board on July 12th for an amendment to the site plan. We've been to two PRC meetings so far and addressing, in the process of addressing comments from staff in the various senior departments. So I think from our perspective, as far as a special exception is concerned, we went through the criteria the last time and the board, I think, agreed with us that we're meeting the criteria here. We're obviously proposing six units now instead of four, which is still well under the allowed density of 12 units. We think they were compatible with the neighborhood out there in that we have residential on all sides of us. We have the condominium, the Sundown Condominium Association, right here to the east of us, some single-family homes on Endicott Street. So it certainly is compatible there. We're not, you know, we don't have an older density. We're working with the terrain and what we have. Along with building guys, I'm not sure if anyone's been out there. I think he's got a nice product out there for these units. So that's really all we're looking to do. Same thing as before. We don't think we have any, you know, excessive impact on municipal facilities. We do have water and sewer to this site that he's extended onto the site already. We do have a driveway curb cut from DOT. This is a state road. So he's already got an amended permit for that. So DOT has already allowed him the additional two units. So we're just looking for the blessing from the zoning board on the special exception and then hopefully the planning board on the... On July 12th. I will say the one thing that we have been made aware of through our two meetings with the staff, the technical review committee, is drainage from the site. So we are coming up with a whole new stormwater management system that's basically an upgrade from what we had previously designed when we just had the two units. We have some off-site water that flows through the site. As you know, as part of the planning board process, we're required to ensure that we're not increasing stormwater runoff onto the downhill properties. We do have downstream neighbors on all, on the north and the east side of us. So we are beefing up the stormwater management here because we have this other unit. And there were some suggestions made by staff in DPW and planning department on how we might be able to make that even better. So we had a site meeting. Roland met with some of the staff out there last month, I think, or early this month. We've revised the plans and those are currently back in review with the city right now. That'll all be taken care of as part of the planning board process. So I just wanted to mention that because I know that there's some, I think there's some folks here tonight, the drainage concerns have been relayed to us and we're actively working on those. But our feeling is that's a planning board. Planning board's on top of that and that'll be part of the planning board approval. Other than that, I'm happy to go through the criteria or answer any questions, whatever your preference would be. I think it's relatively straightforward on all the other issues. I just wanted to make sure we touched on that one. Anything else you want to add? So that's it.
So that little bit of wetland between three and six?
Yep.
That's not an issue anymore? Or is that the one you're talking about filling in?
That's, that will be filled in. The application is still pending at DES? Is that correct?
Correct.
So certainly, if we don't have that when we get to the planning board stage, we would make the approval contingent on them getting that. I don't think you need to do that. You can if you want to, but...
Because that seems to be intruding into the squares, if I'm looking at it right.
Yep.
In which case, then at that point, would they need a variance to be able to build that close to the wetlands if they don't get their prior approval from...
That, under the current ordinance, that wetland is small enough that we do not apply a buffer. So it would be just the actual wetland. It is...
Now, that odd-shaped rooster piece on to the left off of five?
That stays.
They're intruding into it.
Right. They have a CUP for that now. But again, the buffer for that has been...
Been, okay.
Taken away.
Just trying to dot the i's because don't want that to come back and...
Yep.
Can I ask what the minimum size of the wetlands is? That we don't...
3,500 square feet is the minimum. The rooster-shaped one is around 2,300 square feet. And the other one is maybe 400?
700. 700.
700. I... It is a very, very low-value wetland. Yep. Is that under the purview of the zoning board to manage that? It's more construction and building department, isn't it? It... Actually, it's planning. Okay, planning. Planning and conservation, yep. So for the board is the specs of exemption to allow the additional two units? Yes?
Is this your final extension on this piece of property?
It is, sir.
Yeah, I don't think they have any room for anything else. Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
Question? Turn around. Go back to your original drawing. Yeah, go. So I walked the site today. Nobody was there. And I would have asked permission, but I did walk the site today. The building all the way to the right is in a different location. So now flip it back over. Yep, that one there. Flip it back over. It is in a different location from where it is today. And was that approved by the town to move, by the city to move that?
And is, was that, was that approved by the town to move, by the city to move that?
It was verbally, um.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
The bill, it's in a different location.
It is in a different location. Originally, when we went, it was actually suggested to turn that toward the street. And the reason we did turn it toward the street is because when we were digging the foundation, we felt that we were too close to the wetlands.
I got you, yeah.
We thought that we were too close to the wetlands.
So you got verbal permission from the town to move it?
No, no, no.
Well, there's always, there's always, I answered that question. This is the plan that the zoning board, this is, I took this plan from the zoning board application. After we go to the zoning board, there are inherently some minor tweaks that happen through the planning process or through, through the construction process. So everything that happened was approved by the Planning Board.
Got you.
Either prior to or during construction as well.
So relative, they just adjusted it relative to what it was and whatnot.
The front right corner stayed the same, we twisted the building because we felt that we.
To stay away from it, sure.
Yeah, it was just better for them.
So your exemption, what is, what is it that they said that you needed to come to the, I'm, I'm curious of your understanding, what is it that they said to you that you need to come to the zoning board for?
So the.
To build the additional two?
The multifamily use is what this is, because it's multifamily on one lot, is allowed in the zoning ordinance as a, by special exception.
Oh, okay.
So it's just a special exception. It's not a variance we're looking for, it's just a special exception.
Okay, good. I was curious what they said to you on that. Okay, I'm complete.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit briefly.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wished to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Charles Miley, I'm a member of the Board of Directors at Sundown Condominiums in Abutter to the east. If you have a map, we are over here. These two buildings are in question, Building 59 and 63 of our building, our units. Have you all received copies of these photographs in your documents?
Yep.
Okay. If I may present. On the zoning, zoning variance application form for adding a third building to the 224 Endicott Street East condominium development, I refer to the zoning, I refer the zoning board to the second page, question C. The requested use will not overload any public water systems and nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets. To that clause, I speak to you, the zoning board, about our drainage issues. Give you a little background if I could. Going back to the summer, spring of 2021, the Sundown Condominium Association has spent considerable time, effort and money trying to mitigate the water damage to the areas behind Buildings 63 and 59 and possibly into their foundations themselves. Last summer, as a member of the Board of Directors at Sundown, I spent considerable amount of time visiting with city officials in the Laconia Department of Public Works, that would be Krista Larson, Taylor Daigle, who's a conservation tech, and with the DO, New Hampshire DOT, Samantha Feifield, either in their offices or at the site at 224 Endicott Street on several occasions. All these officials were sincere in their desire to listen, to show me what has been done already with drainage mitigation and to want to figure out what to do next. I appreciated their level of, that level of concern from them. Again, this year and starting the spring of 2022, even larger areas of water ponding and potential infiltration were created behind Buildings 63 and 59. And to those pictures I refer you to, pictures of both areas, and this was severe ponding of water sheeting off of what we think are granite ledge. I began the process of contacting city and state officials all over again, even meeting with, with a new face of Rob Morrow in the planning office. The Laconia Planning Department and the DPW showed me new drainage plans for the 224 developer to follow if he were to build the third building. And I don't know if you have, these are the old ones, I included, I gave you some documents this afternoon, maps. But this was the late, this was one back in May that the developer had developed with the runoff coming and being funneled into two areas. Taking it away from dropping off the side eastern slope and back to a holding area, the north eastern corner of the property, and another fork going to two retention areas to the left side, the west side of the new proposed two-unit building. That's changed, but we'll get to that in a minute. The past efforts to drain the water runoff from the two buildings already built have created water damage problems, continue to create even larger water damage problems. And the new plans of, of yesterday, 620, 2022, even more water damage problems to our property. Therefore, we have little confidence in the new drainage plans proposed as part of the development of an additional third building on the 224 Endicott site. As the city of Laconia, as city, Laconia taxpayers, we want their water drainage problems to be no longer ours. We don't want the surface water to come sheeting into our property. Just pushing the water away from 224 Endicott toward other residences, ourselves and even Ashley Drive is not the solution. Management of the water has to be approved as a demonstrated function of any agreement we have. Instead, take the water off of 224 Endicott property in a way that guarantees the end of our drainage damage issues at Sundown Condominiums and legal assurances the developer of 224 Endicott will be financially responsible for present and future drainage costs to the Sundown Condominiums and their residents. If that means pumping the water elsewhere so it harms no one, so be it. We are very fearful of the downgrading of the resale value of our property in the future. I think I know what is right and wrong and the way this is planned to be resolved is wrong, in my opinion. That's a statement from the Sundown Condominium Association.
Go ahead.
Does Sundown condominium itself have a comprehensive drainage plan as a part of its establishment?
And, and yes, we do, and, and.
And that's been.
Various forms.
Developed along with your whole planning.
Yes.
Of this?
Yes, there, there are several conduits that run under 11B, Endicott Street, historically run, and they're piped under our property and out toward, toward the lake in the back of the property. There's also an open conduit that comes across under Endicott Street and goes into a, a holding area created right in front of Buildings 63 and 59.
Once again, I ask, does Sundown have a comprehensive water control plan for itself, the Sundown community? Not just the infrastructure that has been put in previously, but the plan on how you deal with water moving around Sundown itself?
We have some grates in, in the ground in various places that are periodically cleaned. They take off surface water from the parking lots and streets, if that's what you mean. Up until this point, there has been no appreciable ponding of water behind Buildings 63 and 59. It started a year ago. Prior to that, there was, you know, nothing to, to this magnitude. And even this year, the residents will tell you, and some are here to speak, that the water ponding has increased substantially. Does that answer your question?
Not quite. Because I still haven't heard that as we develop Sundown, we had a comprehensive drainage program to make sure that any offflow from Sundown was mitigated by the neighbors. Is that a part of it? Some of these, like what you're asking.
We didn't have neighbors. I mean, that, no, that, that lot on 224 Endicott was a, a natural wooded lot to some degree. It had been semi, it had been a little cleared, but it, the water coming under, as you can see, there's a conduit coming of, from the south, coming under Endicott there, right in front of their property. And that was a natural, as I've been told, it comes into the, that property. So up until this point, until, until a year ago, in spring, summer of 2021, there hadn't been an issue. I've been there eight years and others have been here, who's in the audience, been here longer and we can attest to that. I mean, you, you, I couldn't walk back there this year. I mean, I sank, my wife and I were, she's on the landscaping committee. We're, we're going in three, four inches in our sneakers. It's like a sponge. And that never was like that. Especially behind 63. Okay. Thank you. I've got a lot of stuff. My wife says I have too much paper.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Robert Ducharme, I'm an attorney licensed to practice here in New Hampshire. I was born and raised in New Hampshire and I represent Sundown condo association. I'm here to fill in hopefully a couple of blanks and explain a few things. We believe that the time is not right to grant the special exception, commonly and perhaps colloquially known sometimes as a, another variance, which is actually the first point, that they've already been here once, as they said. They came before you and said, we want to convert these and have four units. And they admitted when they were up here that there's already runoff. Their word was there's discharge flowing down that flows off the site onto Sundown. They said, we're working on that. They've created a problem that wasn't here before the first approval, before they started clear-cutting the trees and the vegetation and putting tar there. So it runs off and as you know, gravity takes it, it flows from on high to down low. They're up top and the down low, as you can see, is to the right on your maps, which flows directly downhill onto Sundown. They haven't fixed that problem, they said that earlier. They're gonna, they put up two buildings, they put up, two of the units are done, two others are on construction. So we don't know what's gonna happen after they finish those, how much more runoff there will be. And before they resolve that, they're asking for a permission to put two more. And when you look at the map that they've given you, back on the bottom left, bottom right, there's the, the retention pond. If you look at it, that's what they're claiming they're gonna run off the water to so that it won't go running down. Well, first of all, we don't know that there's any culvert that's going through there. If you look at it, it's actually smaller than the size of the living room, one of those units. So if it's already flowing downhill, so much so that they can't walk out back in the spring without sinking down and you've seen evidence of some of the, in some of the pictures of it, how is that, how's that tiny little detention pond gonna solve the whole problem? That's the hardship that they didn't even address, the unnecessary hardship of you denying it. They haven't met that burden of showing that, that this is an unnecessary hardship. And the Supreme Court cases that are online say that an unnecessary hardship is if you came to and say, hey, we have this beautiful piece of property in a residential area and it's, we're using it for residential and that would be unnecessary hardship if you denied it for residential use. But that's not what they did, you already gave them that permission. And they haven't passed the test yet to say we've done this properly. There's still runoff and they're only put up two of the six so far. There's gonna be more clear-cutting going on, there's gonna be more tar. To the answer to the question of, I think it was Mr. Foot, with regard to drainage, you have to remember, this is the granite state. That's why they're not going down. And what happens is, from the discussions I've had with the board and the owners at the association, their, and their conversations with DES and with the town, it flows down so fast that they can't, that the, the silt in the soil doesn't have time because there's granite right on it for it to dissipate. So you have, you have granite coming up top on your ledge, coming down, rolling down to more granite there. And there's topsail of that and it can't go anywhere else. Except, as we've already acknowledged, into the foundations of some, that's starting to breach them, they're gonna have more troubles with that. Now you get damaged property with only two buildings of the six they want there. With the drainage plan that they had, that they've admitted has not finished and not worked, but we're gonna take care of it. They didn't come before you today and say, we've had a problem, here's how we've handled it, now we want to go to the next step to show in good faith that we've taken care of this problem, so there won't be any problems. The hardship is not to them, there's no hardship to them. You already gave them permission to put up four units. The hardship is to the association and the damage to the association. Because there is no drainage except down onto Sundown with only two of the units there. That's the problem. Happy to answer any questions? If not, I'll leave you with, I so wish we were back on Zoom, I'm so much taller and better looking on Zoom than I am a person.
It's camera angle. Camera angles.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time.
Good evening, my name's Mark Granoff, I'm in Abutter, 41 Nestle Down Drive. I'm the president of Sundown Condominium Association. I think basically, we would like to see the developer and the city of Laconia work together to manage the water. I mean, that's what we're talking about here, is, and to properly do it. You know, we want to be good neighbors, we want the eventual owners to be good neighbors and all to be fine. But as we see it now, the water is doing what it wants and it's going downhill and we're at a lower grade. There are areas behind this property and adjacent on some of Sundown's land that are lower. And it seems to me that, you know, it's calling for some piping or some holding pond areas to be added to the plan. And I, I think it's a, a bigger solution affecting other properties as well. You know, you go down Ashley and then you go down Pendleton to the Pendleton Beach area, you see the pumping station. There's a lot of thought put into pumping sewage and pumping and managing the water to the lake. I just think the solution is out there, I just don't feel that it's completed as yet. And I think that we are looking to this board, the city, the developer, to do the right thing and, and manage the water so that it gets to where it wants to be, that's the lake, and not in our, our basements and the garages of those units and so forth. So just look to get some help here. Thank you. Yes?
Are there any cellars in your condominium buildings?
There are, the 63 and 59 buildings have underneath garages and they have partial basements with those. So there's a garage area and then there's like a boiler room or a washroom and, and some have apartment-type rooms down there as well. So laundry and, and.
Have you had a water problem now?
We believe there's a couple of units that have had some water intrusion. Yeah, I don't know if those owners are here, but there has been, there is this divide between the two buildings that it seems like the water from above Route 11, Route 11 itself and the hill that is part of 224 wants to go down to where we have that stream and retention area. And in the spring, when it really rains, that pipe that comes out from under 11, that runs like a fire hose. And it, and in the spring, it's running like a real river. And in the spring, it's running like a real river. So the water wants to go there. And, you know, I'm not a civil engineer or anything like that, but it seems like some proper ground modification or sloughing or whatever you call them, adding in to get to these streams, tying it together would be a natural thing. But I, you know, that's beyond the scope of Sundown. I think that's a larger equation. Because really, you know, it's the hill and the roadway above, everything above Sundown is trying to go through Sundown and go to Mont Pusake. So, you know, that's what you're looking at. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against this application?
I'm Dr. Susan Garringer. I live in the 59 building. One thing hasn't been mentioned here is we never had a mosquito problem. And now it's just rampant with mosquitoes back there where this water is standing. Also, I don't know, but I'd like to ask, does he not have to have a space for a fire engine to turn around in there? There is no space if there were a fire. Thirdly, when this mess started a year ago, I went to the city and I got some of the paperwork and such. And it was stated that as he went to the easement for our water drainage, any foliage, trees, et cetera, that were taken out had to be replaced. Nothing has been replaced. Where I used to have beautiful trees behind me, I now have a hole. I see daylight and a four-foot standing standpipe. That's now my view. I'm asking that this builder be made to replace what he ripped out. Yes?
What is the purpose of the standpipe?
I have no idea. He put it in. I have no, that's just my view.
Would it be possibly a part of a drainage mitigation type thing?
I have no idea.
We'll find out.
I have no idea. I'm just saying that we need some of our trees back. He does, he needs to replace them. Look at the paperwork. That's what it states. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Elfman. I'm at 63C. I'm right down below him, and I can't use my backyard at all. It's all mud. And we're past mud season. I figured, you know, when it was mud season, it would dry up. Hasn't dried up at all, just ponding. And I can't step off my deck. It's not right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against? Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Howard Richards from 84 Ashley Drive. I'm the property just to the north of the property in question. I do have standing water on that property, on the upper hill of it, this time of year, that it should, you know, it's always damp, I'll admit. But it seems to be a little bit increased. And I saw a drawing where the, one of the solutions was to have a retention pond put to the left of the new units. That puts that even closer to my property. Last year, Laconia went in and had to completely rebuild and repave Ashley Drive, which is the road in front of my house. And part of the area that was the most damaged over the years from runoff was right in front of my house, between my property and the property to my right. So, given the expense that we spent on fixing that road, we don't, we don't want to increase the water heading towards the road again and have to repair that again.
Yes?
Is Ashley Drive an accepted city road? Or is that a part of Sundown condominiums? Who maintains that?
It's the city.
Is that true?
It is.
Dean?
It's plowed and maintained by city trucks.
Ashley is a city street, yes. All right, thank you.
So I just ask that you, you know, in this decision, make sure that we don't increase any runoff towards my property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. As the record indicates, no one else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Therefore, I bring it back to the board, and the applicant, please come. Well, sir.
Can we address a couple of things? So.
Oh, please do.
Drainage is obviously the concern. You know, some of these concerns have been expressed to us, just for me, since we've been back before with this new application from the planning staff. I can't talk to how much correspondence has been between, you know, neighbors out there. Certainly, as far as, and I didn't get all the names right, but all the people who live out there who testified, we obviously have a responsibility and requirement to not increase runoff to adjacent properties. And that's what we need to do. The design that we had before, can you hold that up? Flip it over. So we had a design that was approved by the city the last time that took into account some small stormwater basins down here that should ensure that we're not increasing that. I don't know what, you know, I'm not gonna disagree and argue that something's happened over the past year. I don't know what the history is down there. They're obviously below us. We have to make sure that we're not increasing the runoff there. What we were kind of handicapped by the last time was we had this little wetland here, which, you know, we thought or should have been providing some storage volume out there. We were handicapped by having this buffer out here. We don't have the buffer anymore, and we're filling the wetlands. We've got a lot more ability to grade in this whole area, to use that for more stormwater management. So when I said we have more ability out there, we do have more flexibility out there now. I don't see if there's anything deficient in what we had done the last time. It's entirely possible that building out there could have some impact on groundwater, which could cause seepage down there. We're trying to manage stormwater runoff. That's what we're required to do. There's regulations that the city has, it's part of the planning board process to ensure that. We do it on any development. So we know here, we have the benefit of knowing now that something's going on down there. We have the benefit of having a new plan with a new unit out here and a new ability to expand that system and to take another look at it here. So that's what we're doing. Obviously, the city staff is well aware that anything that we're proposing out there in terms of stormwater management has to be approved by the city and the engineers at the city as well. So that, all that process is happening is part of the planning board approval. You heard some of the neighbors here talking about those detention basins. Those are plans that haven't been submitted to this board. Those are plans that have been submitted to the planning board that are being dealt with there. We don't have any of that information shown on this plan because we were just talking about the density and the six units here. But all those issues are being dealt with, and I would expect this whole discussion to take place at the planning board. We're not looking for any waivers from stormwater regulations. We're not looking for any deviations from that. We're looking to comply with the regulations. And I'm sure that the planning board will not give us any approvals until they're comfortable that we've addressed all the drainage concerns. We can't increase the runoff to neighbors. I mean, that's just something we can't do. So this will make sure that that happens, or the planning board won't approve it. That's kind of my position. I will say, I don't think I need to say this, but Attorney Ducharme was talking about unnecessary hardship. And clearly, that's not what we're here for. There is a difference between a special exception and a variance. So I do take issue with that. There is no hardship associated with this site. There is no requirement for that. This is simply a special exception for allowing six units where we're allowed to have 12. Any development out here, whether it's a single-family home or one duplex, would have, you know, the obligation to not increase water to the downstream neighbors. Clearly, there's a situation here where there's some issues downstream already, whether or not they've been experienced or not. There's a lot of water coming down there. As was testified, there's a number of culverts under Endicott Street. One of them comes onto our property. There's a couple more down the hill that go into the Sundown. So we're taking a look at all the water that's coming onto our property and how it's going through our property, too. It does go downhill. The water's going to flow downhill. We need to make sure that we're not increasing that water, which is what we're doing. It's hard for us to, you know, demonstrate that at a zoning board meeting because you don't have the benefit of having the experts, I think, that the planning board has to look at this. So our position would be that we are dealing with that at the planning board. We would like this board to approve the special exception. It's obviously gonna be subject to planning board approval. We have just this week submitted revised plans yet again, based on conversations with the city and comments from the technical review committee and the site walk that I mentioned before that they had out there. So we'll continue to work with them and address their comments until the staff is confident that we are properly managing the stormwater out there.
Sir?
Yep.
This board has the expertise to review all aspects of a development. We have conservation committee members. We have planning board members. We have general contractors that are on this board and stuff. So our ability to review all aspects of things are here. Okay? So we're not just, does it fit inside a little square or not? Okay? Number two. The under C, under special exception, it says, nor there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto the adjacent properties and streets. Okay? The question I have is, with the two buildings, this should have all been mitigated already. And it doesn't appear to have been mitigated. Okay? And I'm not sure how far along we are with the landscaping and stuff. But it has been proven that landscaping and the trees and stuff does help mitigate some of the runoff and slow it down and give it a chance to spread out. Okay? So I don't know where we're at with any of all of that. And to compound the matter, I have reservations based on C, on how do we, or how does me as an individual, one vote of the board, look at this and say, wow, we've done a good job with the two, and we're gonna be able to add a third building in here and not have any more problems? Well, I don't have anything in front of me at the moment to help me to understand that. Okay? I have the words of something that so far is not functioning. Okay? I have the current plans of a development that's not functioning. And so, and I know you're sitting there saying, we're gonna do better. But why haven't we already got to the point where we've done better? And now we have another building we would like to do? Because we've already solved all the problems of the two buildings. So help me to understand that, please.
Well, I guess I'm not sure exactly what the question is, and I.
Well, the question is, why should I say yes, put a third building on a site that is already having trouble with two buildings?
You shouldn't. You absolutely shouldn't. If you think there's a problem out there that we've created, then you shouldn't. And if you want us.
I don't know that you didn't create it. You haven't provided me with the information to make a sound judgment.
So that information is available. It's been submitted as part of the planning board application. If we have drainage report, absolutely, we can get a copy of that to the board. If you would like to review that and review all of our calculations, that can be provided to you. You do have, and I apologize if I offended anyone saying you didn't have the expertise. What I meant by that was that the planning board relies, as far as my experience, on the reviews from staff. I'm not sure that you folks are getting reviews from the DPW like the planning board is. That absolutely could be something that you want to do. It is within your purview to have experts review our drainage reports or you folks to review them. So we can supply all that.
We don't need to critique it. All we need to do is be able to satisfy the criteria here. And number C, and it has to pass all the criteria, not some of the criteria. And in C, we have a stumbling block to where it, by all apparent reasons, there's an overabundance of water being discharged. May it be through nature or whatever reason whatsoever. It's coming from point A and ended up in point B.
You could argue the fact that it's not, it's not an abundance of water because we were approved for two buildings, not two out of six, two out of three. We were approved for two buildings with the mitigation to take care of that.
Right.
So we're listening to people that say they have additional water or whatever the case may be.
But the solution has not solved that problem. So just because.
Now, how do we know the solution hasn't solved that problem? But that doesn't mean that came from us. That doesn't mean that they didn't come underneath.
Well, if I.
It does not mean, it does not mean that. I don't even think that's funny.
Sir, please don't.
Because we spent several thousands of dollars to make this system work.
When I look at this drawing, and I look at.
Now, that's the new drawing.
I'm just looking at the layout. And I see this deep slope here. And I see the current construction already over here that's been there. Okay? And you're right. I cannot, I can only take their word that it has not been as wet as it is now. But I am looking at slopes, and I can read a geographical map to say that it's a very sharp slope.
Which is there right now.
That is there right now. Okay? And there used to be probably plants and trees and other stuff that helped to divert and change and slow down the waters. That were cut down. Okay? So that doesn't help the flow of the water to slow down so that nature can do its job. Would you agree?
Sure.
Okay. I would, too, because that's common sense. All right? I'm not sitting here trying to make a fight with you and do anything other than the fact that C says we have to be able to address that there's an issue here. All right? With two buildings, there's an issue here. So we need to figure out how to make a solution so that we can get to a third building. But it's hard to say, yeah, let's just go through a third building up when we haven't solved the problems of the two. You see what I mean?
I do, I do.
So.
And I think we have addressed that in our, in our plan, which I didn't think was gonna be talked about tonight because this was a special.
Exception.
Exception meeting, not a drainage meeting. So we do have additional drainage in our new plan, which we weren't prepared to share tonight because we didn't think that's what we were here to talk about tonight.
Well, unfortunately, through C and with the excessive storm runoff, or may it not be, I'm not sure. I'm not there to witness it. But I can only take the words that you provide me and take the words that the butters provide me and try to see if there's common ground here so that we can find a solution. Because I don't want to see us saying, yep, well, let's throw another third building in there. And now we've increased the problem even more. Okay? And now we've increased the problem even more. Okay?
We don't want to see that either.
No, you don't. You want to be good neighbors. And we all want to be good neighbors.
I think that's exactly right. And I think, you know, Mr., is it Granoff?
Yeah.
Who, who, um, said what, what, what I understood him to say was, what he really wants is for us to work with the city to make sure that they, we get this right. And I can't tell you what, you know, and, and I'm not prepared. I have not analyzed their property. I don't know what the drainage problems they are having down there. I don't know if it started in the last 12 months or it's been exacerbated. I don't know. I'm taking everything they say at face value also. All we, all we're required to do is manage our stormwater from our site. The city's looking at that. They're hyper focused on it right now. Everyone's hyper focused on it right now because this issue has been brought up. Something could have happened to make, you know, I'm not saying that we've, we've erred at all in the design of our original design. Something may have happened in the construction that may have been a buried boulder or something and this water going into the ground that could have got a different way. What I'm trying to explain is that we are very much, and I hate to use the word handicap, but we are very much limited in our flexibility before with what we could do. We're not anymore because we, we're filling that well and we're, we have more room to work with. So I really think adding this additional unit is affording us the ability to take another look at this and make a more robust system out there, um, which is what the city's asked us to do. They're looking at it. So when I look at the requirement in here, it says, you know, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff. Well, that's, the site plan regulations say there'll be no increase in stormwater runoff. So we're being held to a higher standard at the site plan than we are in this item C that you're referring to. So that would be the only way I could provide you with any assurance that we're going to meet that and it's going to be met is that we are going to the planning board. I don't think we talked about drainage at all when we were here a year ago. It's obviously something that's being looked at that is going to be better than what's out there. It's going to be something that the city staff can live with and the planning board can live with saying, we're not increasing the runoff to the downstream neighbors. If it's something that you folks feel like you need reassurance, then the only way we could provide that to you is to come back after we have planning board approval. Or after we have some more formal, you know, level of, uh, review from staff, which, which we could do. Or any approval that you grant us would be, would be conditioned about, upon that, whether or not you may get a condition, I think.
Have you had an opportunity to sit down and talk with your neighbors?
I have not been asked to. I have, no one has approached me about that. We absolutely can do that.
It sounds to me, if I may, that they are looking for understanding and helping in their situation.
Absolutely.
And it, they're going everywhere trying to look at help. And they're not professionals in this matter whatsoever. They are looking for solutions to an issue that popped up after all this is done. And, you know, a lot of times if, if two parties sit down together and talk, they can work through these issues with a better understanding. Then, and that way it enables everybody to move forward instead of becoming stagnated in this. Because if, if you haven't noticed that if this passes tonight and it moves to the planning board, these folks are probably gonna increase in their, uh, presence at the planning board. Which means that problem's gonna get compounded even more. If you follow my drift.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
And so things that could be discussed upfront prior to all of that. And that way you, you, you can find a way to help it. So when you do go before the planning board, it won't be as much of a headache.
Absolutely. That's a excellent suggestion and we were talking about that before we came up here.
So anybody else have any questions? I preached enough. Sorry, I apologize to the board.
The retention pond, couldn't it be made larger? Cause the lady said it's only, it shows on the map here, it's only 15 feet long.
Yeah, I don't know which plan you have in front of you. We didn't submit any pla- plans to the zoning board. Uh, we just, we submitted some plans yesterday, uh, that have, uh, we have revised drainage. We have plenty of opportunity on there to do lots of stuff with drainage. We can make stuff bigger. We can design for larger storms than the city requires us to. Sure, we, we can. Um, we can make it twice as big if that, if that means anything to you, but.
The culvert that goes under 11B.
Thank you.
In the center of your property, where, where does that running? I mean, where's that water going?
Where did it used to go?
Is there a swell there? I, I, nothing's shown here.
There's a culvert that comes onto our property that conveys some water from the road that goes through the site and downhill onto the downhill properties. That's all, so that's always done. So we're, we're needing to manage that as well as the runoff from our driveways and, and yards and roofs.
That's a question. Please, go ahead, Mike.
You know, as I sit and look at this here, I'd hate to put all the weight of water drainage being on the development on one piece of property when you're in an area that has slopes all over. So I don't have a tax map number on this here. But certainly looking at the undeveloped land that's relative to Heritage Road and Plantation Road. As we look here, we have a fairly significant stream that flows south under a culvert, one would assume, and right past 63 and 59. This goes across to Ashley Drive, once again, trying to get all the way down and goes down to Pendleton Beach Road. Now, that is a little watershed that is not a part of this development. But certainly I know that they've done forestry work on this. And so some of that has also lost some of its, uh, coverage of trees and stuff like that. I think in this here comprehensive, instead of putting all the weight on this one piece of property, once again, they're beholden not to create any more outflow than what is there. But as an overall thing and seeing what actually flows through sundown is some of this stuff from back in the day that has probably never been taken care of. And that's my question about an overall drainage plan for the area. And where you go to that? Do you put all the weight on these people who are developing this? Or is that an overview that needs something else? My question.
That would be called a master pl- drainage plan.
And in some of this here also, given what has been recently presented for Conservation Commission in that we've had an intern looking at this now. And unfortunately I wasn't able to be there over Motorcycle Week. But, uh, this was recently presented to us. So there might be some information there that the city would have if they're looking at an overview as to where their pour points are. Pour, P-O-U-R, as to where water naturally flows. And that there has nothing to do with this here, though it's a significant outflow. It's not right on this plan. It's just around it. And yes, it will affect 63, it will affect 59, it'll affect everything over, all the way downstream.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I want to think, if, if the.
Please.
Um, if the, if, if the board is not inclined to grant the special exception tonight, you know, we would certainly prefer rather than a denial, the opportunity to come back to further address this concern. Um, I'm gonna hand out my business card right now to the neighbors. We will, you know, meet with them if that's something they want to do. We are waiting for comments back from the planning board or from the, from the staff. We will be going to the planning board, uh, on July 12th. So I just, I just throw that out there. It sounds like the drainage is the, is the thing that everyone's hung up on. I'm confident that we can overcome that. We're doing exactly like they want us to do, working with the city to, to get a system in there that's, that better protects them than what's there now and probably what used to be there. So we're doing that. And if you folks want to put a pin in this, I think Roland would be happy for that. Or if you have faith in the planning board process, we, we'd love to walk away with a conditional approval from you tonight.
And I would too, because we already have two buildings in there. We're asking for another building. And by putting that building in, we can make the drainage better than it is right now. So with your approval, we can try to appease the neighbors. Either showing them that our project isn't damaging their property or we can help mitigate that. And then with the, with the planning board, um, going in front of all that with additional drainage and making sure everything's up to par. Right now, we have the two buildings built. We don't have to go any further, but there's problems. Right now, we have an opportunity to make the drainage better by putting the third building in. So keep that into consideration as well when you make your decision, please.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you a question and I gotta think about it for a second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
They need our approval before they go to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay. And they're scheduled for the planning board July 12th.
At the moment, but that, that could change.
And we would be after the July 12th, our next meeting.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
What's more, Louis, I'm sorry, Jeff, the culvert that crosses the road. Is there a trench that runs along the road to take care of that runoff from the culvert or?
On our property?
It just spills straight across or?
It went into the property and kind of went in the direction of the wetlands that are on the property.
Exists, uh.
Before you built.
Previous to what we've already done. We have a detention area right now that takes any water, which we haven't seen any in two springs, come out of that culvert. Well, but we have a detention area that holds any of that water and any of the water from the top of the hill comes down into that culvert and is diverted south, which should show on that plane. Southeast section.
Any other questions of the applicant at this, well, we've already opened it to the public and back, so. None?
Can I add something?
No, sir.
Well said. Thank you.
Any closing comments?
No, I think that's it. We, you know where we are.
First time you've done it.
You may have a seat. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I went out and walked the site today. I went all the way over Meadow, Meadow, is it? What's the name of the, the road, your road? Meadow.
Nestle.
Nestledown, yes. And honestly, there is a water drainage problem in Meadowdown on Ashley. There's just nowhere for it to go. It's all very level and there's a couple pitches and whatnot. And, uh, Mike, to ask you a question, the culvert that goes across, it was, it, it's an old one that crosses right there at the driveway. And it just, it just historically has dumped water out there, probably has filtered as it's gone across. But if you look down on their properties, you can see where the water has, it just, it just flows right into the backyard. But because of the, the, in my opinion, the drainage around those homes is, was so poorly done in the beginning, this construction has aspirated that. And, and I would say also probably, my opinion, the construction techniques that they use, all the silt fences laying on the ground, it's not effectual. Right along the north side of Route 11, there is a wash of gravel that goes down all the way to the middle. I mean, even not just the two buildings that the, um, that the folks here are representing, but even further down. Just the construction techniques did not do really well at managing water during construction. And maybe if that had happened during construction, possibly some of this would not, would not have been there. But I, I would say that, and, and Dean, you could ask this, you could, you could see whether this is true or not. Because it's going to planning, they're gonna do all that. They're gonna look at everything on Ashley, on their part. They're gonna look at it all and they're gonna fix it. And, or they're gonna go through rounds and rounds of fixing. I think the applicant to meet with the, with the owners and just say, look, we're gonna do this. We'll take care of it. And if they get that insurance, I think it's good. I would suggest that we grant the exception conditional planning board. And then I really think the building and planning will take care of the rest of it. And they just, they, they have some legitimate issues, but the whole neighborhood, all of these different neighborhoods have issues with water. And we've had a lot of really big water events in recent years. And because, you know, removal of vegetation, the construction, construction techniques and the management of the site during construction, not the greatest in the world, in my opinion, uh, but not wholly bad. But it could have been done a little bit better. Let planning take care of the master plan for drainage and get the water, it's gotta go somewhere. Maybe it is, uh, there's a lot there across the road. There's Ashley. The neighbor to the back on number 84, same thing. The only place for any of this water to go from anywhere is gonna be through his property. And it's a, it's, it's not a small thing, so. But I think planning board, planning's gonna have to manage that and they're the pros to be able to do it. And if the, and if the planning board can't do it, they're gonna bring in the civil engineers to make it happen and that would be at the applicant's expense. But I would suggest grant his exception conditional and then let the planning board deal with that. They're the pros. I'm complete. Mike?
I still feel that the drainage problems in this area are bigger than just what's coming off this property.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Right, this stuff has been here forever. Once again, this lot, number 17, whoever it is, once again, plantation and heritage. All of that drains right across. That's the part back in the day where the developments down there needed to come up with a comprehensive drainage plan. And I don't think you can, it, as far as these people, if they really do pay attention and come up with a good plan to mitigate any additional offload from this property, I think there are other factors that are bringing water in here irrespective of the development on this piece of property.
No, Mike, you're right. That culvert crossing 11, tremendous amount of water coming through there. And, and that comes down to the state as well. But the planning board's gonna be able to liaise on with them to be able to make.
We, we haven't even decided that we own Plantation Drive and watch that thing wash. You know, when that, you get a big rain on that, you get truckloads of, um, sand and everything else coming right down on there. That water, when it gets in that puddle, doesn't climb up and go into this lot to go over there. It just flows right across.
Is there anything that we can do on the building, building side? Because I, I, I just think kind of poor management in the building department, silt fences are down, tremendous amount of gravel on the road. It's just, I don't know. Uh, I think that if those things had been managed in the beginning, we wouldn't have as much emotion from these folks coming here tonight. So I'm just throwing that out there as well. Mike?
They need to come up with a better runoff plan. You know, I, I tend to agree that it's not all their problem. It's from up the road. And they only should have to handle what's on their property, not coming down the road. So I tend to favor with the provision that they meet with the neighbors and come up with a solution to the drainage off of their property.
Make them part of the stakeholders as far as, if they know what's going on, everybody knows what goes on and.
Does the planning board open for public?
Yes.
So what would y'all like to see? Would y'all like to move forward and, and, or would y'all like to wait and see the drainage plan or what they're gonna do with that? Or after they meet with the people, are they gonna meet with the people? Y'all tell me what you like.
As far as the zoning thing here, it seems reasonable and it's not 12 units that this should be able to be done. Certainly with a caveat that all drainage issues need to be addressed. So I would, I would support approval with, um. dependent upon.
So maybe C's at the end of that?
Yep.
Like one, having a meeting with the Somerset folks?
Yep, sundown.
And I don't know what else we can do. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those situations where in order to satisfy C, and currently it doesn't appear to be satisfied, to face value, that we take it upon face value, that the planning board, and with our planning board rep being here, that it goes before them, and then they look at the bigger problem. Because I agree with you, it's a bigger problem than just one, this is one piece of the solution.
You have to pass all of that on one person.
Well, generally, that's what happens up here.
Unfortunately.
We've seen lots of property in South Down where they've sold out all but one, and they took all the perks from the one and distributed it to everybody else and left a shallow piece of land that we have to fix. So it's not our first time of dancing with this kind of situation. Probably won't be our last either.
Oh, no.
I'm, that, I, I guess I'm a little more verbal about this because we're two buildings in and, and uh, I don't wanna be on the backside of a third building with the problem still sitting there, you know? We had the opportunity the first time, and somehow, I don't know what didn't work. But I'm sure we'd like to see something work so that everybody comes out happy.
Will planning do their work if we do not approve the zoning exception today?
Well, it won't go to the planning board until we approve it. And that's the whole thing. And I, and I'm, uh, if I knew, and I, you gotta take everybody for face value, you know, that.
Planning board at face value, that's their job?
Right. That's their job, is to fix things like this, and to address it and to make sure it's correct. So it's not our job. Ours is the other side of it. But they attach this part of it in, it is the, what a runoff. You know, and along with the landscaping. I'm kinda curious about the landscaping plans because there seems to be some lacking on the landscaping plans. I don't know if it's completed or not, but it appears from the input that there's a lacking of landscaping going on. So I don't know if that's by design or just not, because they're not completing.
They're just not complete. They're just not complete.
So.
And I would also agree that.
That could fix itself.
And building, and I, and I, with the applicant, I would agree with this one thing, where they wanna build the house, the third, sorry, the third building, it would be, you know, they haven't done any work in that back section apart from putting in a septic system. Or, is that septic system, is that just, is that?
No, it's serviced by sewer.
Oh, that's, so this is.
Which allows them to dunk through it.
So, so whatever's built back there is just the, that um.
Well, if I had to pick a place to build two buildings, that would have probably been the, the most likely place because that's, appears to be the, the, out of all those elevations going on there, that seems to be the flattest of them all, so.
Well, planning's gotta get it, and planning isn't gonna get it unless we let go.
Right. Any other discussion? Roland?
I just have one more, one concern, and it's what this gentleman said just before they got done talking. And that's when the water comes through the culvert onto their property. It's, right now, it's kinda diverted so that it goes southeast. And southeast of that property is building sixty-three. So if they're getting a water problem at building sixty-three, it could be coming from that culvert.
Could be.
And I have a problem with that.
But that problem isn't with the property, it's with the overall scheme? The water, the way the water runs overall, or is it with the property in question? Because the culvert is not being created, the water's not being created from two forty-four, going through that culvert, is it?
No.
No.
Nope, it's down, up line. So they're the re, two forty-four is the receiver of that water.
Right.
So where it's gonna take its natural course. And as something changes here, that natural course of that water's gonna change too, correct? So, any other discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion, or do you want? The question is, would y'all like to make a motion and, and move this item tonight? Or would you like further information and have them come back next month? Do you feel any further information that could be provided to this board would help us in that determination? And then we can move to have it table till next month? Or do the assurances that are provided to us and the current process in place is enough for us to move the item tonight?
I, I tend to trust the developer to come up with a solution to their, to runoff on their property. So, I, I would like to go ahead with.
Go ahead and let's move it then tonight?
All support.
Roland?
Yeah.
Jane? All right, like to entertain a motion? Anybody up for the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve application Z O twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three two S E. Special exception to allow the third building to be constructed. It's um permitted use in the area. The two additional units won't do any impact on sewer traffic, anything like that. Section C, I hope they can come up with a solution to make the neighbors happy. And we have to trust the planning department to go on with that. There's no other demand on municipal services. The subject parcel is allowed, twelve units, they're only going for six, no public hazards. And all municipal utilities are available, and uh, it fits in with the master plan. Long as they make South Down happy, I'll be happy.
Who?
Sundown.
Yeah, I keep saying so.
Proposal.
Okay.
All seconded up.
Okay, and we got a second. Discussion of the motion? There being none? I would like to put a caveat of A in there that uh, I'm not gonna make it a requirement, but highly recommend that they meet with the people and provide the outcome of that meeting to the planning board. So the planning board can have full knowledge that everything's being addressed by the people, the receivers of things and the whatever. So that would be my only caveat to that, and if that's okay with y'all? Okay? So, we have a motion with that little rider, and all those in favor of the motion? Aye? Motion passes. You get your buildings with that caveat? And a little bit of homework to do for the planning board. Okay?
Because I, there's a newsletter that goes out every Friday. There's been going on in the city.
Go for seven and eight.
Coming up, so.
Good possibility. It is.
I don't feel qualified yet. I'm still learning on the zoning stuff.
They can go for seven and eight, yeah?
You certainly know a lot about construction and things.
Well, it did ask.
I mean, that's what you do.
But we're still reading, so if you could just hang on just a little bit.
So I just thought I'd just let you know that. Michael's on both.
Cross that bridge.
Michael's on the zoning board.
When it gets here.
I just found that up there.
I got one here.
So do you do commercial or residential?
I got it. All right, any other business before the board?
Not tonight, nope.
I'm looking for a contractor.
Any uh, words of wisdom from the board? Any questions of planning from the board to planning?
Relative to this issue right here?
Nope, we're done with it. We move on.
Okay.
Um, I think they, the reason why I say it that way is he, he takes, they're sitting right here, they're gonna take everything we've said tonight and, and, and move it with the planning board for questions. Or prior to it getting to the planning board, Dean's gonna already have that figured out.
Are we still here?
Yes, we are. Yes, we're still here. And with Mike here from the planning board, he's gonna be also.
Sure, sure, sure.
And when it goes to Conservation Committee.
It was.
It was. We have conservation here, so. That's why it's, it's uh important to have these folks on the board of zoning. Huh?
Multitaskers.
Multitaskers is what makes, makes it a successful board, so.
For sure.
If there's nothing else, like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, okay. We all voted yes. Roland, Roland seconded the motion.
So Dean, just in general.
And soon as you turn that off, just let us know.